Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 3, 2020 City of Fraser Regular Planning Commission Meeting. The City of Fraser Planning Commission is meeting electronically this evening in accordance with the executive, in accordance with Governor Gretchen Whitmer's Executive Order 2020-48 and 2020-70. This notice is required to ensure that those wishing to observe and/or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The Planning Commission is regular meeting, which is taking place this evening, using the Zoom for video conferencing and public access. The public may attend and address the commission via the Zoom application, the Zoom website, and/or telephone. The public will be able to listen to all discussion by the commission members and will be permitted to address the commission during each agenda item and during public communications on non-agenda items. All members of the public wishing to attend or participate by telephone will be placed on hold in a virtual waiting room until the meeting starts and will be muted during the business portion of the meeting. The chairperson will unmute and recognize each member of the public in no particular order until all have had an opportunity to be heard. All residents have been encouraged to email comments or questions that they may have on each agenda item by 4:30 to City Hall, 4:30 of the day of the meeting. And we all thank you for your understanding and support during this attempt to navigate these unprecedented and challenging times. The information to the Zoom meeting is printed on the back page of the agenda, which is posted online. I ask that we all, if we can show the flag, I would love to have everyone say the Pledge Allegiance together. Thank you. I pledge allegiance. I'm mute. Unmute, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We were moved to Agenda Item Number Two, the roll call. Mr. Plasinski, can you do the roll call for us, please?
He's muted.
Doug, we need you to unmute.
Hello?
Looks like you're still muted.
Sarah, do you have control to unmute and mute?
Interesting. Um, no. No, I do not.
Okay. Who's muted? They need unmuted.
Doug Plasinski.
Doug?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like he's trying to talk, but...
I can't. Nope, now I can.
There we go. Somehow I removed my self-view somehow and couldn't unmute.
I was trying to, too. I apologize. I couldn't get you to unmute.
There you go. See, now, Clark, did I cause the disruption we all forgot about?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Take one for the team here. Very good. Let's do roll call. Cook?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Farina?
Here.
Perry?
He's here. Just, oh.
Here, I'm sorry. I was muted. Warnick?
Here.
And Barr, I don't see.
Nope.
I did not hear anything from Joanne, so... Maybe we want to excuse her.
And I'm here. You didn't call my name, but the chairperson's here.
Chair Zornacki.
Yes, thank you. I'm here.
Thank you.
I did speak with Commissioner Barr. I expected her to be in tonight's meeting. She may be having some difficulty getting herself in, but I tried to walk her through this afternoon. So, do we need a motion to excuse Commissioner Barr?
No.
Okay. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Agenda.
I did not catch you moved or supported.
I'll support her.
I moved to approve the agenda.
Okay. So, it was moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Perry, is that correct? To approve the agenda as printed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry unanimously. Agenda Item Four are my opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online. The Planning Commission is created by state law and is comprised of seven members, all who have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the requests and whether all of the standards and the zoning ordinance have been met. The Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals heated here this evening are representatives from the city attorney's office, Mr. Clark Andrews and Alyssa Albright, as well as representatives from McKenna Associates, Mr. Doug Plasinski, Ms. Sarah Traxler, and Ms. Danielle Bouchard. Agenda Item Number Five is Approval of Minutes, May 6, 2020. Is there any discussion on the minutes or any changes?
Commissioner Farina has his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Farina.
Item B, 20-03. Under the motion to approve, item number one says the applicant should provide and executed a recorded E, that should be must. Item number two, the same thing, the applicant should put the evergreen screening landscape, that should be must. Those were conditions that were set upon him and not up for him to, if he wanted to do it.
Make that change.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Any other discussion or revisions to the minutes? Mr. Andrews, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Please. Is it appropriate to put the words must, or is it a little bit more politically correct to say shall?
Either one of those works, but should, should sounds a little more conditional, whereas shall or must are more mandatory. I think of shall as being the most mandatory, even more so than must, but I think either one of those works, but I agree with Frank that should is probably not a good option.
You agree, Frank, Mr. Farina, that shall is not a good option?
No, should is not a good option. It says should now. I think it could say shall or must, one of those two.
Commissioner Farina, did you want the condition number one to say shall provide, or would you like to say must provide?
I said must.
Okay.
Okay. We can change it to shall. It doesn't, both require him to take an action. That's always, it's not his option to take the action, he must take the action.
Okay. What is your preference? We, and because Mr. Andrews said either way, so would you like those both to say must as opposed to shall? We will take your recommendation on that.
Shall is fine.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion or changes to the minutes? And I just think that Ms. Barr has joined us for the meeting also.
Awesome.
Ms. Barr, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. We are going through the minutes, approval of the minutes of May 6. Did you have any discussion or changes to the minutes?
Oh, I do not.
Okay. If there's no other discussion or changes, I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the master May 6 meetings as changed.
Support?
I'll support that.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Warnick to approve the May 6, 2020 draft minutes as changed, revised. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Motion carry unanimously. Thank you. Agenda Number Six, New Business, A, 2019 Planning and Zoning Activity Report. Mr. Plasinski, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I just wanted to mention briefly, Madam Chair, the state law for zoning requires that the Planning Commission, excuse me, the state law for planning requires that the Planning Commission furnish an annual report to the legislative body, in this case, the city council, about their operations and planning activities. So, in this report, I summarized the, once we had... of the Planning Commission meetings in 2019. I summarized the ZBA meetings and the cases they heard. So, those are the first two sections. Talk briefly about the master plan review and update, and then what we're looking for and what we've started in 2020 for the planning and development tasks. You know, our staffing as the zoning administrator and planner during office hours, the Planning Commission, the Board of Appeals. I went over last month the technical evaluation that we've started. We've already made pretty substantial progress on that, thanks to Danielle from my office, who's put in a lot of work. And then, once we're done with that technical evaluation, our zoning ordinance update. Off the top of my head, I did notice one typo in the first bullet under Planning Commission Minutes, the next-to-last sentence should say standards for some industrial and commercial uses instead of some. This is a summary of your activities, and I believe last year, this was the format we presented it in to the Planning Commission for forwarding onto the city council. So, there would need to be a motion to accept this report and submit it to city council, but certainly, if you have any comments or more things we'd like to add to it, now's the time.
I thought it was very thorough. Thank you, Mr. Plasinski. Are there any comments or discussion on the report?
Yes, I have my hand up.
Go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner Farina. I don't see the hands. Thank you.
All right. The title of the report is Annual Planning Activity Report. The zoning board is also required by the rules that we set up to send a report to the city council once a year. So, if you're going to combine those, I think it has to say Planning/Zoning Activity Report.
Very good.
All right. And I think, I think they've always been separate in the past, but I have no problem of combining them. Randy, do you see? I know we always did them separately.
Yeah, we always did them separate, but that's good. I like it this way.
Okay.
Well, why don't I, if the Planning Commission moves on this tonight, then at the next ZBA meeting, they can move on their section, and we'll just submit it combined.
And probably, probably who it's from should be, should include the zoning board of appeals as well.
Exactly.
In the subject matter, the change too, as well as the title, in the planning and zoning activity report.
Very good. That's a good point.
I think it's, I think it's thorough, though. It does a good job of advising council what the, what the, what the commission's been up to.
It shows us as a very busy board, so yes, it's very well done, Mr. Plasinski.
And you are very busy and top of the board, so...
Yes, we are. Any further comments, discussion?
I think it's very nice. Do we need a motion?
We do. We need a motion, yes, Mr. Farina.
I'll make a motion to accept, as it, with, without the zoning boards approval, we would need both, both approvals, so I'll accept, make a motion to accept the Planning Commission portion.
And to forward it to city council, I believe, Mr. Warnick.
Yes, and to forward to city council after approval by zoning.
Yeah, that's good.
As revised?
Yep.
As revised.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Warnick and support by Commissioner Farina to forward the 2019 annual report once approval by ZBA to city council. We can go ahead and do a roll call on this. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Plasinski.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Warnick?
Yeah.
Perry?
Yes.
Farina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Sir Nacki?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, nothing.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Six, B, Medical Marijuana Caretaker and Patient Growing Standards. Who is, is it Mr. Plasinski doing the report on this?
Yes, ma'am, and I have a few slides to go through. Fortunately for you, I'm not going to read both pages of that very detailed analysis I sent you, but I want to go over the key parts and kind of set the table for going about potentially regulating marijuana caretaker and zoning standards. So, a recent Supreme Court case, which I talk a lot about in the memo, now allows cities to regulate medical marijuana cultivation by caregivers and patients through zoning and/or licensing, really any of their local police powers, as established in Michigan. Without having those, any sort of local regulation specific to medical marijuana caregiver and patient cultivation, the only rules somebody must comply with are what is, what are in the state law. Now, under the state law and the provisions that the voters voted on back in 2008, were that a registered patient can have up to 12 plants for their own personal consumption, a registered caregiver can have up to 12 plants for their own consumption, and up to 12 plants for up to five affiliated patients. Actually, let me take that back. It may be six affiliated patients, because I believe the max is 72. So, I think my math may be off there, and I apologize. Now, the way the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act was adopted by the state legislature after the referendum was that the cultivation must be in a secure and locked facility. There's no other requirements about where and how the cultivation has to take place. I think that that's, that's where we're at right now in Fraser, absent any other requirements, because up until a couple of weeks ago, legally, we were told by the state court system that local communities cannot regulate any of those other physical or licensing requirements. But as we're thinking about this, you know, I want to point out, how do we get to the point of adopting medical marijuana statewide? The ballot initiative passed 63% to 37%, which is a pretty solid margin for a statewide initiative. And it was really proposed according to some of these points. And pardon me for reading them, but I want to just go through them pretty quickly. That this is a, the idea of medical marijuana and patients and caregivers was a compassionate neighborly and a community-oriented approach to these issues of severe medical symptoms that, you know, people were treating with marijuana from diagnosed illnesses. So, you had to have a reason to be using it. It had to be diagnosed, you had to be given permission in order to register with the state. It stopped people from feeling like that they were doing something illegal, that they could be persecuted criminally. It helped people that couldn't take other drugs, for whatever reason, and they felt that marijuana was the best way for them to alleviate things like severe pain and lack of appetite. It was also really legitimately only to focus on people that needed to use marijuana medically. Required that a doctor certify you. But through all that, and the way the state adopted the law, other than making sure you're registered and showing that registration, there wasn't a whole lot of ability, there wasn't anything written in there to make sure that caregivers and patients didn't potentially abuse the situation. And by and large, the majority of them don't. Unfortunately, some of them do, and we've come across some issues in Fraser recently even, that go beyond just being a registered caregiver or patient. Marijuana growing and cultivation causes a very pungent odor. Actually, the, the illegal grow that we intervened in last week was from a smell complaint through code enforcement. You know, a lot of times marijuana operations, particularly, they use a lot of public resources. They use a lot of electricity, they use a lot of water. You know, we, if they're not in the right places, they may not be wired correctly. Sometimes people don't get building permits, that sort of thing. The equipment, the lights, the ventilation systems can cause an increase in ambient noise. If you're growing, you know, like I said, up to 72 marijuana plants, and you're ventilating, you've got fans running and lights going, there is a noise that comes with that. There's also a potential glare. And sure enough, I was at another client today, there's a medical caregiver registered operation in that community, and the township supervisor told me, look, you can drive by that house at night, and it's glowing, and if you drive by during the day, it's glowing. The lights are on inside all the time, and it's to maximize the product, the flower that they're cultivating. Potentially, you can have increased traffic, and potentially, even if the caregivers and patients aren't involved in criminal activity. So, those are some things that we want to start thinking about while we're considering if and how the City of Fraser may want to regulate patient and caregivers. You know, there's a lot of information we need to try to collect in order to better understand this issue. You know, and we want to give the Planning Commission good information, we want to give the city administration good information. You know, if there weren't issues that were on the ground today about medical caretakers opening up shop, medical caretakers grouping together, so instead of 72, you've got 144 or 216 plants in one building, because they've decided to co-op together at one site. If those weren't happening today, you know, I would not necessarily consider this an issue, but they are happening. You know, trying to get an understanding of what the number of registrations in the City of Fraser is. You know, is this something, do we have 10 people that are licensed patients, or do we have, you know, 1,000? There's many thousands of registered voters that are, and people that are of legal age to take medical marijuana. You know, what, what is the actual impact of people in Fraser? You know, now that we also have legal adult-use marijuana, we need to understand what are the implications of recreational or adult-use laws that have been passed since, and how might they impact with medical marijuana caretakers and patients? What, what is the actual public safety impact? Are there cases of violence or criminal activity in conjunction with caretakers or patients in the community? We don't know. You know, we do know, again, that people will decide to start a grow operation, they'll not pull permits. The, the one that we got involved with last week was a land contract purchase, so it's routed through another layer of issues with the building. It was a use change, it's in the industrial zone of the city. They didn't pull any permits. We certainly didn't know about it. The site is absolutely trashed, there's litter and debris everywhere. So, even if, even if it was completely copacetic, you know, if they're using that as an industrial use, then we need to make sure it complies with the rest of the neighborly rules that we have in Fraser about keeping nice-looking, presentable sites. You know, regardless of where they're at, we want all of our uses to be attractive. That's part of the strength of the City of Fraser and our character here. You know, speaking of this happening in industrial zones, do we need, you know, certainly, if the city were to allow medical marijuana caretaker cultivation in industrial zones or even commercial zones, is there a surplus property where, that would fill up? Do we have a vacancy issue? Are those spaces visible? What kind of vacancies are there? I mean, from what I can tell, most of the industrial property in Fraser's already being consumed, so, you know, what, why, why is, why is this use attracted to maybe some of the more marginal properties? Is it a lack of investment in property? Is it a lack of size of the building? You know, or is that really the best place for it? You know, that's some decision that policymakers can certainly make about it. We can get some information from assessing about property tax implications. Remember, when somebody is a caretaker and they're cultivating, or you have multiple caretakers and you're cultivating, you're not paying the additional taxes that the medical marijuana facilities pay into the system, that the city would get a cut-off. So, when the city opted out of the cultivation facilities, the commercial facilities for medical marijuana, now, all of a sudden, there could be an end run around that opt-out to allow them anywhere. You know, and do those facilities, if they're not done well, negatively impact neighbors? We know that at least we have neighbor complaints, you know, so are there land value implications? Does it attract from the overall industrial or commercial or residential neighborhood? And then, you know, definitely, we want to look at, how can we, with limited resources and without, you know, stopping people's rights to exercise under this law, how do we mitigate nuisance factors like odor, you know, smell, glare, noise, traffic, and just make sure that the, the system isn't getting abused?
Ma'am Chair?
Yes, Mr. Andrews. Sorry.
It's okay.
Prior to this Supreme Court case, which the city, I mean, the township of Byron lost at the trial court and at the Court of Appeals, so there were a lot of people that weren't very optimistic that the Supreme Court was going to find in favor of the township. And, and at the, at the lower court level, the court basically said that since the voters had voted on this, that this was something that the, that the state had really taken over the regulation of, and, and that local municipalities would not be able to, to have any regulatory authority in that, in those areas. But the Supreme Court looked at it differently, and they basically said, unless, unless you ban it completely within the community, because that would conflict with what the voters had approved that allowed medical marijuana, they said, we don't think there is preemption, and we think that as long as there's someplace in the community where it's allowed, that, that you can, the municipality can regulate it. So, part of the thing that Fraser and other communities are needing to do now is, is sort out this, that they really didn't think they had any power in the first place to get involved. is sort out this, that they really didn't think they had any power in the first place to get involved in and try to figure out, how do they want to regulate it? Where do they want to allow it? Because you can't ban it everywhere because then, then you do have a preemption argument. And if somebody contests it, the city would likely lose. But as long, but as Doug indicated, we feel that there needs to be some additional fact finding done to figure out what's currently going on as well as where do we want to be? And if you were going to allow it somewhere in the community in order to comply with having the authority to regulate it, where do you want to allow it and under what circumstances? And a lot of those decisions are ultimately going to be made by the city council, you know, after input from the staff and the planners and the city attorney and so forth. But it's something that is clearly worthy of further study and possible action. There's a lot of money involved in the marijuana cultivation in the industry and the people that are involved in it are going to push very hard to get what they want. So municipalities have to try to prepare to deal with that. And we felt that since this case was pretty brand new, I think it was decided in late April, that it was worthy of bringing to the attention of the planning commission so that they could start thinking about it and realize that that's something that's going to be on their radar over the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. So you are not expecting any type of finding from the planning commission this evening? This is all information?
This is informational at this point. And because up until, you know, a month ago, we didn't really, we had any authority to do anything in this area because of the passage of the initiative and the two lower court decisions. But now that the Supreme Court has overruled those two lower court decisions and they are the highest court in the state of Michigan, then we know that unless another case comes along in the future, that they reach a different decision. Right now, the law is that municipalities can put regulations on marijuana growth in in a community as long as there's someplace in the community where somebody could grow in compliance with the initiative that was passed by the voters.
Commissioner Barr, I see your hand up.
Yes, I read the cases and I studied them and I agree with Mr. Andrews. But my take on it is that, yes, there can be some changes, but you have to do it carefully. They didn't leave it wide open. The two issues in front of the Supreme Court at the time was whether the city could charge for, you know, doing it. And the answer was yes. And the other one was, the woman who was objecting said the city, Byron, said it had to be in a home. It could be no place else and she had it in a commercial property. And the court said, no, it did not have to be limited to the home because it wasn't such a broad discretion or decision against what there was. So, but the way I read it, it was fairly limited on what you can do against the M M A Act. So I think Frazier has to be careful. Yes, you can charge for it, yes, you can make certain limitations. But I'm afraid if you got too tight on it, you would get overturned again. That's just my take on it. And I used to draft the opinions for a judge that he knew would go to the Court of Appeals in the Supreme Court. So, you know, I'm not totally a beginner on this kind of stuff. That's all I'm saying is I don't want the city to think they have wide open authority to pretty much do whatever they want. Has to be very limited.
I think Commissioner Barr, that that's very good advice. And that's, Mr. Plisinski and I and Don Denault talked about it last Friday. And we're feeling the same way that while the city may ultimately decide to do something, they need to do it after making some factual findings about what they have going on in the community as well as what they want to do. I think that the city of Frazier, like most communities, are not excited about getting into a long drawn out, expensive court battle with somebody that is in the marijuana business because there is a ton of money behind this marijuana industry in this state. And I have heard from various sources that the the costs in Michigan are higher than they are in other places. So potentially that means that there's even more money to be made here maybe than other places. So there's a very active marijuana growing and distribution industry that is is poised to really go after communities that are too strict. So I think Frazier needs to proceed cautiously and determine what they think is in the long-term best interest of the community.
Are there any questions?
Sarah or Michelle?
Commissioner Farina, go ahead.
How big a problem or how big an issue, how many licensed people do we have in the city? I don't know that.
I don't think we do either. I mean, that's one of the things I think that we want to find out.
Okay, and when we talk about, is the fee that we would charge a set fee or can we set that fee?
You can set that fee, but it has to be reasonably related to what your cost of administering the ordinance is and once we get in an ordinance, if we go that direction. In the state of Michigan, municipalities, whenever they adopt a regulatory ordinance that provides a fee schedule, that fee schedule cannot be arbitrary and it cannot, and it must be reasonably related to the to the cost of what's incurred in administering it. And because if you have an ordinance that charges fees that are not in any way proportional to what the costs are of administering it, then the courts have said, that really isn't a regulatory fee, that's essentially a tax. And that's, and you can't, and you can't adopt taxes like that just to you know, have an additional revenue stream. So those are the things that if the city decides to go down the route of regulating, is going to have to determine what's going to be involved in the enforcement of it. How much manpower is it going to take? Where are we going to need to add additional city staff in order to do that? And how much time is it going to take and so forth? Because those fees have to be reasonably related to what's the actual cost of operating it.
In other words, is it going to be inspected once a week? It takes two hours to inspect? Does a policeman have to swing by to see that everything's up?
You know, and all of those, you're absolutely right, that those would be the things that would be taken into account. And you would figure out what the cost of the employee is, including the fringe benefits and so forth. And how much time are they going to spend doing it? And how often do they have to do it? And are there going to be some spot inspections rather than just periodic announced inspections and so forth? And all that would be set forth in the ordinance. But you need to have some idea what you're going to be faced with. I mean, it doesn't have to be absolutely foolproof in the sense of you can't predict with absolute certainty. But there are some communities that think, well, particularly if they're, some of the rural communities have said, boy, this is an opportunity for us to really make some money on this stuff and we need some revenue. But I think that they're going to find that when they investigate it further, that they can't just set any arbitrary fee that they want to because they'd like to get more money out of it.
Exactly. The other thing is we could, and I think we should, put some regulations on how close it could be to the school. You know, so when you guys are thinking about that, that's one thought that comes to my mind. And I know we can't say it has to be two and a half miles away from a school because that essentially gets rid of all of Frazier. But I mean, there should be someplace where it's not near, in my mind, school children. So there isn't the
I think that's, I think that's a likely type of condition because a lot of other less desirable types of uses often are set up as special approval land uses. And one of the things that is often included in the special land use standards is how far something is away from from schools and other protected types of places. And I know that when we write ordinances for uses that you aren't real excited about, you know, like adult uses or, you know, maybe orange shops or, you know, different types of users that you just do not have young children be exposed to. Usually there's some distance requirements from schools and places that kids are likely to frequent.
Now, is it, and I don't mean to monopolize this, so if anybody else has a question, but could we say that it cannot be in a person's home? I mean, to me?
That's kind of one of the things that we kind of need to examine a little more carefully because it's clear that the initiative, I think, contemplated that somebody could grow marijuana for their own personal use in their home. On the other side of the coin, there are the idea that there's a whole bunch of people that are going to band together and put it in a residential area. In the subdivision that I live in, somebody bought a foreclosed house and started redoing all the electrical wiring and so forth because they were going to turn this twenty-five-hundred square foot house into a grow facility with hundreds and hundreds of plants. And the neighbors kind of got wind of it. These people set it up, kind of started to set it up in the middle of the night and the officials from the community got involved and found out and DTE got involved and found out these people were essentially stealing electricity and so forth. And so they essentially shut it down. But, I mean, the potential for that and having a significant impact on residential neighbors in terms of smell and fire hazard and things like that. I mean, most people, when they buy a house in a residential area, have an expectation of the uses that are around them being residential uses as opposed to a commercial nursery, you know, with the number of external effects like smell and noise and odor and all kinds of things like that. So there's some, I think over the next few months, there's going to be a lot of information developed, not just in Frazier, but other places because a lot of communities are going to be examining this issue as a result of this case decision.
Good.
Commissioner Kyle, did you have a question?
Yeah, I got a couple. First of all, I agree with Frank about the schools and I would also add the work parks in there too. We do quite a few grow houses for the cooling, the HVAC part of it. And also my office in Shelby, we have a pretty big house next to us that's a grow room in the house and also the garage. And you had mentioned something about Edison. Edison actually came and set a new transformer in the backyard for the garage. It's that big, but our parking lot reeks probably three out of five days a week. When you get out of your van to come to work, it's pretty bad. Now, Doug, you made a remark about opting out of commercial. Did the city do that? Did I understand that?
It's my understanding that the city opted out of medical marijuana facility licensing, which is dispensary, commercial grow, testing, transport, as well as the adult use that was adopted in later referendum, yes.
I thought you meant like commercial buildings because I think that we have a lot of big commercial buildings that would be perfect for grows. That keeps it out of the neighborhoods. Because you're going to get complaints, we do, you know, when we walk up to these houses now, it smells bad. That's all I wanted to say.
Commissioner Barr?
Well, I think this has been, the medical marijuana has been around for a long time. And they've had the big, like factories growing them. And there's been a lot of abuse. They passed a law, they said, you can't just go to a doctor one time and get your medical marijuana card. Okay, so they went twice. The second time, then they have an ongoing relationship. The going rate was $200 because I've done a lot of these court-appointed work defending people. So they, and a lot of these places, these huge places, they would get a whole pack of prescriptions from a doctor. Not honestly, not correctly or by law, but they'd have them. The doctor would sign them and all you had to do is go pay $200, there's your prescription, now you can do marijuana. But now we've legalized marijuana, it doesn't have to be for medical. I think that's going to change the whole landscape of all of this. And the issue on that case that we were just talking about, it was whether or not she had to do it in their home. That city said you had to be in your home only and she had rented a commercial place. And they said, no, they didn't have to be in your home or out of your home as long as they complied with the M M A Act. So that's another thing, has to be studied very carefully and see how it's going to impact or not impact. And it didn't say, it did not say that a city has the right to do whatever they wanted. They were very limited on those two issues. Did it have to be, did you have a right to say it had to be in a house versus a locked facility? Since the state, the act says a locked facility, that was one of the things. And then whether or not the state could charge at all for it. So they haven't gone too far other than that. And that's why I think we have to be careful or we'll be in a lawsuit and spend a lot of money to attorneys to fight this. And now that marijuana is legal, that changes the whole landscape. I mean, that's just what I'm saying. I'm saying that, am I happy with it? No. Did I like what I saw happening? No. I've never had marijuana and I probably will never do it. I don't know. But I'm just saying is that I've watched this evolve and I've seen how it's getting more and more legalized, more and more legalized. And I don't know if somebody, and also you say, well, it can't be near a school. What happens if your house is near a school? And you absolutely have a right to grow the plants in your house for your own use? I don't see how you could regulate that. I don't know, I think a lot more research has to go into this. That's all, I'm done.
I don't see hands, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Randy's hand.
Mr. Warnick, Commissioner Warnick, please.
Can you hear me? Am I coming in clear because I'm getting a lot of interference with talking?
I can hear you.
You can hear me?
We can hear you, Randy. Go ahead.
Can't get any, I can't hear anybody else. Okay. My main thing is, uh, firstly, you know, when we talk about uses with secondary and that, that comes into play with, um, location wise. So I know we're probably going to have to at least keep it to, in commercial industrial and stay with those distances ways like, like we did with tattoo parlors and, um, uh, pawn how, pawn breakers and whatever. And, um, but the good thing we have going is that we require certificates of occupancy or compliance. So any business would have to get that, which generates inspections by the, uh, building, electrical, mechanical, uh, plumbing.
Randy, I think, I think in a lot of these instances...
And the fire, so they get all those. And at the heart with the prob, biggest, the homeowner ones.
Randy, you froze.
I froze?
Yeah.
Oh, you're back.
Tell me when I'm okay. Am I back?
You're okay.
Okay. I don't know where I ended. Um...
With the homeowners. You said that's a challenge, the homeowners, Randy.
Yeah, the homeowner challenges that is, everyone we've gone into before has had, you know, uh, extension cords, not grounded, any, all over trying to run key and lighting and, and they can't do it. The houses aren't equipped, owed on the electrical. And, and that's where the biggest safety issue is. So I, I think no matter what, we have to somehow incorporate these certificates of occupancy and compliance and go out. And if they're going to do this, they're going to have to invest in the changes there. But of course, they're still going to have those secondary effects on neighbors. And that's why I think things need to be, um, farther away from, from that. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnick. So if we, if we do it through a special use process, could we not make the conditions that it can't have any negative impact to neighbors, especially homeowners? I don't know how you could possibly, how we would protect homeowners, the neighbors of the, somebody who would like to do the grow processing.
I think you, I think you clearly can, you know, establish special land use limitations and restrictions because that's what special land uses are all about is a balancing of the interest of, of, of neighboring properties and, um, but as, as Commissioner Barr indicated, it's, it's a little trickier in this area because of the fact that it's increasingly becoming a legal, a legal, L E G A L, not illegal activity. And, and so you have to balance that. But, but as Randy said, you know, you have to make sure that people get involved in getting the necessary permits because there's safety considerations if, if people set up, uh, uh, you know, electrical, uh, connections that are not safe. And, and clearly the people that live nearby have a right to be free of nuisance. And, and special land use has a lot to do with protecting neighbors from nuisance type conditions. And clearly the, the smell that is emanated from a grow house, um, usually is a tip off that something's going on. But these is all, these are all the things that we should be investigating as part of this, uh, fact finding process before we decide what, if anything, we're going to do.
Okay. Commissioner Cook, do you have any comments?
Yeah, real quick. Um, I thought originally the most appealing part for these cities to adopt something like this was the tax revenue base that it would come off of it.
Agree.
Is that still true, the tax base? Or I've also heard that the state of Michigan is now going to take the money instead of having the, the tax base go to the cities. I don't know if Clark knows anything and that.
I, I think, I think that the, the state of, the, the state licensing fees are very, very, very substantial. And, and, and from what I have heard at least, it, it, at least in the commercial, uh, distribution and, and growing type of arena, you're apt to have a, a fewer number of players that are bigger players because of the licensing fees being high and the cost of, of complying with all the regulations and the, and the, the, the setting up the grow operation in, in a way that's, that's safe and all that kind of stuff. But, but what this case involved was much more having to do with somebody doing it under the medical marijuana laws as opposed to the, the commercial distribution under the, under the laws that allow, you know, licensing and regulation for recreational use. I mean, there's, there's a whole regulatory scheme of, of different types. I mean, there of, 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 uh, facilities that is highly regulated by the state and the state is in the press, took a long time developing some regulations and, and so forth. And that's, you know, finally coming, coming forward. But, but what this case had to do with more was that somebody wanting to do it under the guise of, of medical marijuana caregiver and how many, you know, how, where, how many they could do. And, uh, uh, this, this particular property owner in question wanted to do it in a commercial area in, in Byron Township that was not allowed under the zoning ordinance. It was only allowed to be done in a residential area. And, and they, the, the property owner claimed, well, you, that's, that's too restrictive in that the initiative shouldn't, it conflicts with what the initiative said. So therefore you shouldn't be able to regulate it at all. And the Michigan Supreme Court said, no, that's wrong.
Okay. I can't raise my hand. Chair. Um, just to kind of wrap up, I, I think we've had a good discussion. We all understand the importance of it. And we've talked about the issues. As Clark said, we need to get information. We have a lot of fact finding and those facts are going to drive, you know, if we regulate, how we regulate, you know, what those regulations look like. Um, we want to talk, we've talked about nuisance factors. Uh, we want to make sure that people can cultivate as, as Commissioner Barr said, you know, for personal use, you're, you're, you can't be told you can't grow for yourself under the court ruling. Um, but we don't want people that may be growing for other people to disrupt the community. Um, and, and Randy makes a great point, you know, for those homeowners, we want code compliance. We want them to pull the electrical permit. We don't want them to feel like they're trying to hide something and creating a safety problem. So I think that's all really important, uh, and good feedback for us going forward. Um, the other thing is until, and if we decide to adopt something locally, uh, people can continue to establish, um, caregiver grow licenses with up to 72 plants, multiple caregivers on one location. And the only tools we have to regulate, those are the ones that we already have on the books. So things like the C of O, the permitting process, um, potentially, um, uh, site plan review. Um, we, you know, if somebody establishes a caregiver license at their home and registers, you know, the city pretty much has to allow them as long as they pull any permits for physical and construction modifications. Um, you know, that's just how it is. So, you know, I, I don't want, I'm not trying to say that there's going to be a flood of things. I don't think that a lot will change, but definitely, um, engaging the community and, and trying to keep people safe and they really is what the intent of this is.
Mr. Placzynski, what is your timeline with this going forward?
Well, um, you know, we wanted to gauge, uh, what the planning commission's reactions were. And I think you guys provided a lot of really great input. Um, getting, the next step is pulling that information together. So I'll be in City Hall tomorrow, um, to, uh, discuss with administration and the building official and maybe talk about some internal timelines and we'll get with Clark and Don. Um, as we talked about, you know, what regulatory structure is impacted by, uh, adult use recreational marijuana. I don't know those answers. We need to get that information together. You know, Don brought up the taxes. I'm, you know, I'm under the impression that no caregiver or patients pay any additional taxes for growth. Um, and certainly we don't want to encourage a black market where they're hiding. You know, we, we just want them to be safe and to, to get back to that kind of compassionate care model that, uh, you know, that the law was passed by the voters in 2008 to accomplish.
And, and the, the procedure would be, okay. And the procedure would be eventually a zoning text amendment that would go for public hearing before planning commission and/or city council? Both or one?
It depends, that with respect to that, it depends on what the form of the, of the re, of the ordinance comes up to be. I mean, typically the planning commission is involved in zoning text amendments. And so if in fact there were some zoning ordinance amendments pertaining to this, that says in what zoning district is allowed and what zoning districts is not allowed, then that would, that would go before the planning commission. If it ended up being strictly a regulatory ordinance that did not involve zoning, um, whether that came before planning commission would, would really depend on whether the city council wanted the input from the planning commission, but it wouldn't be required by law. Most regulatory ordinances do not go to the planning commission, but, but sometimes the city council wants the input of the planning commission, especially if it might have some zoning implications as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Uh, Mr. Placzynski, have you received any public comment? Has the city received any public comment on this item? Voicemail messages? Okay. And I'm not sure who the organizer is at this meeting. Do we have anybody in the waiting room? Is that Ms. Bouchard? Are you?
No, we don't have anybody in the waiting room.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much. So I, we are ready to go on to agenda item number, um, seven, unfinished business, city of master plan.
So I'm going to turn the screen over to Sarah if you'll give me a second to make sure.
Thank you.
Share it.
Thanks, Doug.
You should be able to go.
Okay. Um, I guess I will put this up, um, now, just so we have it ready. Um, although we don't have slides for the content that you received, um, yesterday. So first, um, I trust that everyone received the email, um, yesterday, more late morning, I believe it was, um, with some draft language for the master plan. Um, just procedurally Danielle and I had in a good, um, kind of flow here over the last couple of weeks and, um, I'm happy to start, you know, really getting some content down for you to respond to. Um, previously I had shared the table of contents and the structure for the plan and, um, some maps, some of the graphic design templates. And of course you've approved the community survey, which, you know, again, I think we should launch probably within the next month or two. Um, yeah, just kind of depending on how, how many hot topics there are, um, you know, locally, regionally, nationally. Um, we don't want to, we don't want our online and hard copy survey to get lost, kind of lost in the, um, in the noise, if you will. Uh, anyhow, so today, um, we present to you the first section, which is the planning context, um, which sets the stage for why you prepare a master plan, describes, um, the regional snapshot to position Fraser as a small city in one county of a larger region. And that includes the regional location map. And then, um, we wanted to set the stage with regional and development planning trends that, um, you know, because your residents, um, work, play, visit family and friends and other communities, that's important to, you know, kind of display how Fraser is influenced by the region as a whole. So that regional development and planning trends discussion, which is on page nine, um, describes increases in jobs, um, or I'm sorry, the industries that experienced increases in jobs over the last decade. Um, it describes development trends over the last handful of years. And then describes broader development and planning trends beyond Southeast Michigan. So we've talked about strategic issues in the past, um, together, things that you want to see addressed. Um, the, the one that always springs to my mind, um, based on our ongoing conversation is, um, senior housing and strategies for folks to age and place in Fraser. Um, it being a tight knit community where, um, you suspect that people will want to, you know, continue living here and having options if they choose to relocate just their home within the city boundaries. So consistent with some of the strategic, uh, issues that we've discussed, Danielle wrote a nice summary of the A A R P, um, planning trends, I think that we've talked in the past and how there are four, um, livability principles that we would like to weave throughout the plan. So kind of think of these as, um, helpful as a foundation for, um, future strategies and future land use. Compaceness, integration of land uses, um, housing diversity and transportation options, the diversity of transportation op, options. So making sure that folks can meet their daily needs, um, in a, in a small, integrated and, um, definable area that's close to where they live. So we go into greater detail on those, um, options and kind of those, um, theoretical principles that will influence the plan. And then, um, we provided the kind of demographic section that describes who's living here in Fraser. Um, I like saying here in Fraser, even though I'm here in Royal Oak, but virtually I, I feel I'm in Fraser. So that's what I'm saying here. Um, so just pretending I'm at City Hall based on Clark's screen. Um, so here we provided the demographic analysis and the study of the characteristics of the population. Um, just as a side note today, I didn't get a chance to do this, but, um, as we're developing the content, if there are any, um, data tables, I like to pull them out of the Word document and back into Excel to, um, check all of the numbers as a double or triple check. So, um, so we didn't do that today. Now that it's on our list of things to do. So, um, if you saw anything that was funky, we'll be catching it. Um, so we're presenting population change. I think, you know, we've talked about this, these figures before. I think the main takeaway here is that your population is just sort of projected to be stable and has been stable, you know, for the last, um, decade plus. So, um, we're not seeing, um, projected any major changes in your number of residents. Um, you, um, let's see here. In terms of age distribution, um, your community is aging in a similar fashion as other, uh, similar metro Detroit communities. I think, you know, the main takeaway here again is that, um, you know, Michigan isn't a state. Our region isn't a, an area within the state that is picking up, um, a large infusion of, of younger folks, for example. So, um, you know, as you've heard the stories, as people kind of, you know, delay their child rearing years and have less children and, and so on and so forth. We're just kind of seeing, um, in communities like ours that there's, um, a larger share of older folks. seeing in communities like ours that there's a larger share of older folks. In terms of race, racial distribution, race and ethnicity, we've provided the information. I thought, you know, anecdotally in similar communities, I know certainly East Point, when we were writing their master plan, there was a change in that percentage of white alone, especially post-recession. So, you know, the Great Recession opened up homeownership in communities that before perhaps weren't as affordable, especially for previous residents of the city of Detroit. So kind of as you march northward and outward from the city, communities did see a greater share of black residents especially. So just to kind of document that change, I think we're going to add 2010 and 2000 figures here to this table to see if what I suspect is the case. So you're at 88% white alone, and then 6.4% black alone, and then a small amount of Asian alone and two or more races or other races. In terms of owner occupancy, you may recall that Frazier still has high, relatively high rates of housing ownership as opposed to rental. Regardless of the type of housing unit, you still have higher ownership than comparison communities. You saw the lion's share of your development between 1950 and, kind of sound like 1915, 1950 and 1980. And then we provide figures on where people who are in the labor force in Frazier, where they're employed in terms of the industry. You know, perhaps not as, as a surprise, you know, we summarized it by saying that Frazier residents build, maintain, and repair quote unquote "things", which are knowledge jobs that are at risk of being moved to different regions or even countries with the current mobility of many sectors. So, you know, you still employ people with these technical skills. And their implications, you know, of course, in terms of continuing education and retraining, should those jobs leave in large part again, you know, in our region. We provide median income, household median home value, and so on and so forth. And then also commute times. So this is actually a quality of life thing. There are, let's see, if I were you too, 50% roughly of your residents have a greater than 25-minute commute. Your residents are in the labor force. And the other 50 are 25 or under. So, you know, just thinking about certainly, you know, the impacts on kind of health and wellness of commuting and not really having transit options. And you just kind of think that a fair share of your residents who work are in their cars. And then finally, in this section, we provided, these profiles are called Tapestry Segmentation that describe the, the way that market data research companies have figured out, like, who, who the person living here is, who the household living in Frazier is. So I think that we'll probably provide a little bit more detail on these segments, but the first is called Rust Belt Traditions. And it shares some characteristics that in Rust Belt Traditions, the group is likely to have low unemployment rates, are family-oriented consumers, and live in modest, single-family homes. A lot of this rings true anecdotally. Small-town simplicity, these are residents are more likely to be young families or seniors that are bound by community ties. And there's a slightly larger unemployment rate and lower labor force participation. And then savvy suburbanites, quote unquote, is a group that's likely to be empty nesters or nearing that stage of their life with low unemployment rates, who appreciate technology and tend to spend more money on entertainment. So this is just sort of like getting to defining your typical household types. You know, from, from that description, I think we basically want to, you know, A, understand if there are unmet needs in terms of land use, infrastructure, and sort of social opportunity in the city. And then just also emphasize that the, you know, the, the unit that we're preparing a master plan for is a person or people, you know. For whom do we plan? Not for our roads, not for our sidewalks. We've planned for people to be using those amenities. So of course, important to describe who lives here in Frazier. And the second half of this section will be the results of the public engagement once we get the, the survey completed. And then finally, that, the next section that you'll be receiving next month is the existing land use descriptions and starting to break down your corridors and nodes and neighborhoods and start describing the physical characteristics of the community, not the person characteristics, which we just did. So something, you know, to get the conversation, I guess, before I move on to the goals and objectives and kind of want to tie that together, I wondered if there were any questions on the content. I, I would like to share how we would, you know, love to receive revision information and stuff, if anyone has any specific edit suggestions or, or issues. Oh, I forgot to look at the hands. I'm sorry. Okay. So I think, to me, this seems like a really digestible amount of information. There will be months and times when we're providing more, but I think if we can proceed with feeding you these packets, and then if you have any, you know, edits, suggested edits, you can email them or drop them off at City Hall and Doug will get them to us. But basically, from month to month, we'll just be on the sections that you've already reviewed and just kind of marching through the document. So it's most certainly not your last time, you know, to take a crack at this nut. And you'll see that there are, you know, kind of sequential conversations that are going to take place based on information that you've already reviewed, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Traxler. Thank you.
So the, what I wanted to do briefly to tee up next month's conversation is to share with you the goals and objectives that were in your 1990 plan. I spent some time yesterday and today going through those sections. And just as a reminder, your current master plan is your 1990 plan. You had a significant draft from 2015. So we're using both of those plans to backcheck, use as a basis of some of the sections, because, you know, there, it's good, important work that we don't want to leave behind if unnecessary. But I really liked the way that the 1990 plan presented its goals and objectives. So this is why I'm sharing my screen. Can you see the PowerPoint presentation? Okay. So the 1990 plan presents goals and objectives which are topic-based rather than just focused on land use. So these are the 10 goal and objective sections in your 1990 plan. I know that you all have access to the 2015 draft. It's on the city's website. I don't believe that everyone has a copy of the 1990 master plan. And when I get into the office next, I'm going to have it scanned in so that you can look at the concepts in there as we're, as we're progressing through. We definitely don't have an electronic copy of that, like we did the 2015 plan. So interestingly, the plan starts out with kind of this conceptual foundation, which I think is very relevant still today, especially when you consider that there hasn't been a lot of development even since 1990 and that, you know, you're, we're largely kind of the same in terms of land use at that time. Or it begins with the statement that Frazier is a community that is rapidly approaching full development and subject to a possible complacency. So while I may not phrase it that way, I think it's, you know, very, very interesting and timely that, you know, communities are in an improving mode when they're developing and then once, you know, are perceived to be fully developed, sometimes kind of don't necessarily transition into a maintenance, upgrade, upkeep mode, but rather just sort of sit on, on investment that was already made before. So the goal here, and then, nestled underneath this goal, which really action on steps and strategies, which will be proposing new ones for you to consider, says that remaining planning decisions can do much to enhance the city's development pattern and that the city shall continue to plan to keep Frazier an attractive place in which to live, workshop, and recreate. And then there are specific strategies or objectives underneath this goal. So, you know, I think that I would like to bring forth this concept, this conceptual statement. And as, as a really basic reminder that what we're talking about when you talk about Frazier development by and large is infill and redevelopment of existing, of existing sites. There's a goal statement, a statement and a goal regarding residential. And I think that what you really focus on here and throughout your 1990 plan, it's stated very much that Frazier is a community of single-family homes. Now-
Excuse me, Sarah?
Yes?
I just got a text from Randy.
Okay.
He got left out and they had to let him back in.
Okay.
Michelle would have to let him back into the meeting. He lost.
Or Doug.
No, he's gonna, if we want to let him back in, I guess.
I want to let him back in.
I let him back in.
Am I there?
Hi, Randy.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Randy, you're back.
All right. Sorry about this, Sarah.
No, thank you. I'm sorry about that. So I was just kind of noting a nuance that your, your prior plans really affirmed your single-family residential character. There's not much we're going to do or could do that would erode Frazier's identity as a, a community of single-family homes. The nuance is that the things that we're talking about when we talk about allowing seniors to age in place with options to move if they do want to move from their single-family home, is that we want to backfill and add to that with other types of housing, whether it's, you know, a cottage court for seniors or duplexes that look like single-family homes appropriately placed at key intersections or along corridors or so on and so forth. So, you know, we haven't gotten into the nuts and bolts of how that would happen, but we are suggesting that we think it would be a resilient approach to additional development in Frazier. Commercial, interestingly, the 1990 plan is pretty clear on not letting your commercial areas creep and creep and creep. So it designates nodes in the northwest, you know, corner of town up by Meyer, and on the southeast corner of town, down on Grossback, where our favorite supermarket and outlawed development is. So, you know, really designating those two nodes on that outskirts of town and then the central business district in the middle of town. We know that, you know, physical retail space is undergoing change and that you have some vacancy already, some somewhat persistent vacancy. So I think one thing to consider is that we might get to a point where we're recommending that your future land use actually plan for a smaller amount of commercial, especially, you know, kind of single-use commercial land, and figuring out what we, how we might address land that was previously planned for commercial and what a, a different land use might be other than that commercial. Alternatively, your industrial base certainly seems to be thriving. You know, there are ways that we can further study this, but at least anecdotally, I think, you know, we're assuming that that's the case based on the cases that come before you. I think it's certainly true. So here, you know, we will be asserting statements and including goals and objectives related to industrial. This is where the goals kind of deviate from a land use focus. It started out with a concept, went into land use, and now here is describing it as an environment and quality of life statement. Here, I think it is interesting, I may not call it this category environment, since it sort of implies environmental, but this is where they were talking about a small-town nature and, you know, kind of that feel that attracts residents and makes residents want to stay in town. And also bringing in open space, aesthetic and recreational potential uses. Traffic and transportation, you know, here we're talking about the need, they were talking about the need for providing through traffic and convenient local access, but making sure that through traffic doesn't negatively affect your neighborhoods as much as possible. In an introduction and I would say movement since 1990 has been to shrink your rights-of-way to better accommodate other users, other legal users of roadways, i.e. pedestrians and bicyclists as appropriate. So I think, you know, that's a big to-do for our team and working with, you know, state engineering, administration, and then making proposals to you is, you know, where might we be able to shrink some streets if appropriate to get, to get slower traffic potentially, to have less negative impacts on your neighborhood, and also to encourage that compactness and walkability. Recreation and pedestrian circulation, we'll be reviewing your Parks and Recreation master plan and incorporating and perhaps suggesting even additional, you know, kind of land use and infrastructure improvements that might augment that. We'll be working with the director on that item. Public buildings, this is something we really, I think, will be working with administration on because, correct me if I'm wrong, but I kind of, I would have checked the plaque in City Hall. I think City Hall might have been built after 1990. Is that right?
Right. City Hall was 2000.
Okay, yeah. So that's the, I think, basically kind of the result of the master plan or the master plan already, you know, kind of accounted for a move that was already underfoot. So this section is definitely obsolete, but we do need to see if there are other public building and public facility needs to incorporate here. They broke out public safety facilities, which we might just sort of put under that, just, you know, kind of public building facility umbrella. And then sewer and water service, you know, acknowledging even at the time that some facilities were aging and that the city should continue to improve and extend the public utility system as appropriate. So again, we'll be, you know, relying on our, our kind of development review team to help craft these sections and to bring into, into the plan kind of where City Council especially is and where the studies and analysis say they should be. So I just kind of wanted to tee up the, the organization of what we'll be working on in terms of goals and objectives. And the reason we like to introduce these ideas early on in the process is to already get you thinking about action and your implementation section. So in general, typically, we turn these goals and objectives and then action statements into your implementation chapter that says- into your implementation chapter that says in what phasing, in what order, what potential partners are on these steps and so on and so forth. And you'll have impact, of course, in the providing direction stress on those. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Traxler. Any discussion?
Not at this time.
No? It was super. Thank you. Thank you for the presentations, Sarah.
Oh, sure.
Okay. I'm assuming there were no public comments on this item or anybody in the waiting room. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number, agenda item number eight, public communications on non-agenda items. Do we have any communications?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number nine, zoning board of appeals member liaison report. Mr. Commissioner Farina, do you have a report for us?
No, I do not. We have not met. Let's see, before the pandemic and I've been, not been notified of any pending issues that we would need for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item 10, commissioners' comments and items of interest and concerns. I will start with Commissioner Warnock.
None, except that, you know, I'm looking forward to getting back together in a group format, making this technology thing not be as difficult as it is. But it, it was a challenge and it's, it's something, I guess, if you gotta get used to it, you gotta get used to it. That's all. But other than that, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Cook?
Everybody, please stay safe. See you next month at City Hall. Oh, what is the date of the next meeting?
It's going to be. Going to be the 20th, July 20, right?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah, it'll be the Monday, July 20.
See everybody next month then.
Thank you. Commissioner Kyle?
One thing, I mean, this time it's, we did prints and stuff, but we usually get the packages on like Wednesday a week or so before. And, you know, this time, I mean, it was Friday, that's the property. But, you know, if we could try to get them on Wednesday, especially when there's going to be prints and things that we have to go over, that would be great. I understand that with everything going on that it's probably a little bit tougher right now, but something I'd like to see to work on.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I have instructions to get together instead of this Zoom. It'll be nice to get together. I hope we can.
Okay. Commissioner Perry?
Nothing at this time. Just hopefully everybody's healthy and staying safe.
Sounds good. Commissioner Farina?
I just wanted to say that St. Maliki is opening up Friday. We're going to have a fish fry because a lot of our parishioners anyway felt they were cheated out of their fish. So we're going to have fish fry from four to seven and everybody is welcome to attend.
Is that this Friday?
Yes, and it's going to be carryout only.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Farina. On behalf of getting the agenda packets out earlier, I know Mr. Plodzinski is working very hard at City Hall trying to prepare everything. So I don't know, Mr. Plodzinski, did you have any comments on the request of Mr. Commissioner Kyle or you just want to leave it?
We, we held the packets a day late because we had, we wanted to get the accurate Zoom meeting setup number for the agenda.
Okay.
Before we published it. So, you know, that was a snap to generally, it would have been, I would have been delivering them Thursday morning instead of Friday.
Okay, because I, I know you're in, at Frazier on certain dates and so forth, so yes.
Yeah, I, I, with, given that I'm working from home mostly, I've been able to be at Frazier more consistently, but with everything opening back up, it'll be back to more set office hours there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Plodzinski, would you, did you have any follow-up on the T-Mobile cell tower with regard to the maintenance responsibilities?
They did send the document over. So I need to get Clark to take a look at it. We, we also discovered that the, which we hadn't found the original paperwork at City Hall, but City of Frazier actually negotiated a buyout and kind of a lease extension for a lump sum a few years ago, which extended the terms of the lease by 65 years. But in addition to a one-time cash payment of, I think $125,000, they substantially reduced the rent. So we discovered that. But then during that, and Sarah and Clark know that I was working through this with administration and getting the paperwork together, but now we have another cell tower that's sending duplicate checks. So we have another agreement to try to hunt down and find. So just one issue is beginning another. But I will give that to Clark to take a look at. You know, I don't think that they are violating any of their maintenance responsibilities, you know, but certainly the, the motion was for the attorney to, to sign off on it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plodzinski. Any questions on Mr. Plodzinski with regard to that item?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think if there's no other discussion or questions, it was time for adjournment. Does anybody have anything to say? Go ahead, Mr. Plodzinski. I have to keep, I'm going to have to make myself a note on that. Please go ahead.
Okay. This month's quote is, "Summer was on the way. Gentlemen, I waited it with impatience. Summer was our best season. It was sleeping on the back screen porch and cots. We're trying to sleep in the treehouse. Summer was everything good to eat. It was a thousand colors and a parched landscape, but most of all, summer was dill." Does anybody remember what story dill is from?
No.
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 Dill is the young man that was the visited scout and to kill a marking bird every summer. And he, he, he was a literary construction to try to bring, you know, to weave an outside viewpoint into the story itself. So, but most importantly, this is about summer and I think we are already.
Amen. That's very enjoyable. Thank you very much, Mr. Plodzinski. I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion for adjourn the meeting.
Okay, and do I have support, please?
Support?
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Cook to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Is that me or Cook?
I'm confused. What are we asking here?
The adjournment. I thought I.
Oh, was it you, Commissioner Farina who moved? I, okay. It was first, okay, I have a mix up. Commissioner Farina who supported then?
I did.
You support. Okay. So it was moved by Commissioner Kyle, support by Commissioner Farina to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:45 PM. Have a good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.